It's six o'clock, we're going to call the meeting to order. Before we go into a whole lot of actual activity in business of the evening, everyone is aware that we have an empty chair down here. As I'm sure everybody knows that, excuse me, I've kept it together for the last few weeks like this shouldn't be that bad. We lost our immediate past president about two weeks ago, Chet Bab. And I thought it'd be appropriate to share a little bit about Chet. He was committed to this council in a way that's kind of hard to articulate. Over the last two weeks, Scott and I have been asked by a lot of different people about Chet's impact. And his commitment to the council and to the town was second to none. Even when he didn't feel like it, he would always answer my phone call on the first or second ring. Even when he didn't feel like it, he was bumbling around town in the office, reading through documents. You know, asking how he could help. And you know, it's just, it's really hard to lose him. He treated the council and all of our town employees like we were a giant family. Even when we're sometimes a little bit dysfunctional. Things get contentious in a meeting and then all of a sudden when we were signing documents at the end, he would smile or laugh or crack a joke and everything would kind of settle back down. And so we're feeling that loss tonight and it's a little weird to look down there and not see him or look down this way and not see him. So I just wanted to recognize that if anybody else has anything that they'd like to add about Chet, feel free to do so. And then we'll go into our invocation of Pledge of Allegiance.
Great boss.
When I decided to run four years ago, Chet called me out of the blue and was a great help in giving me information on what I needed to do. He was like a mentor to me, starting all of that. He was just a great, he was just a great guy and I didn't even know him. I mean, he reached out to me, so I always appreciated that.
When I, when I joined years ago, I got put in, took Chad Wolf's seat. Chad was the one council member that actually helped out. He helped me understand what I needed to do and I do appreciate that. He was a good man.
It's always very welcoming to me. Will you have anything you want to add about your friendship?
Well, just a good brand.
It's been a long couple of weeks, words. So with that, we will do our moment of sound reflection and then followed by the pledge, just a moment. Jerry, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. I'm sorry, Jimmy. Willie, you want to lead us in a roll call?
Steve, sorry about that. Shane Davis here.
Jen Roberts.
Here.
Marissa Skaggs.
Here.
Mr. Danny.
Here.
Approval of minutes from the prior meeting. Those minutes, we printed a couple of copies. There's also on the Google Drive. The only correction that I saw in looking through these, and it was just a situation where we had a whole lot of business last month. The last three items under new business ordinance 2304, ordinance 2305, and ordinance 2306, those are actually all resolutions. It would be the storage unit that was a resolution. The disposition, disposition of cases from Pendleton Town Court was a resolution and also the lease agreement for the fleet was also a resolution and not an ordinance. So we just need to change that. Any other comments or corrections for the minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Sorry. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, Kirk Treasurers report. We don't really have the list of the claims currently. It's, but it's been a rough go of it here at the town for a couple of weeks. But we will get those to our July meeting, no problem. And we will go into department reports next. Mark, do you want to start?
Good evening. Pendleton Police report for May. Wanted to remind everybody that we did have a murder in May and it's currently being investigated. It's not like TV, doesn't happen in a matter of 45 minutes with commercial breaks. With that being said, receiving subpoenas, following up, all that stuff's taking time. And just so you know, there is progress being made. I see a very positive outcome in the future. Reference this case and the guys are working very diligent. A lot of people, you'll hear the rumor, oh, small town, blah, blah, blah. My department during situations like this, it's amazing the teamwork that comes together to, to work on something like this with the guys. And there, there's no lackadaisical attitude. They're all still plugging away and following up the leads. And using tactics to investigate that we didn't have 20 years ago. Makes things a little bit quicker and easier, but still subpoenas, evidence, all that stuff, lab work, that's all still going on in the background. So we're still working diligently on that. Pendleton Heights Middle School invited me for career day. Got to speak to all the students about being the police. With that being said, it was kind of interesting, the kids got to choose the occupations they were interested in. And I was amazed that they were still interested in being in law enforcement. So that was a good thing. Mystic Waters had the ribbon ceremony, Jeep Jam came to the park, everything went well. Destroying of drugs, so the pills that are dropped off at the PD for destruction or family members passed away and they've got all these pills in the house. We used to take them down to Carvanta, Carvanta, down in Indy and then they started charging, so we didn't do that. The pills were stacking up and I had to find ulterior ways. Well, now county highway has a furnace and I have that as a free option for, so we can now take drugs to county highway and burn them whenever the bin gets full. So that's a good partnership with county. Officers participated in the EVOC, Emergency Vehicle Operation Training for the month. So we're plugging away on our yearly mandates from the academy. We did that over at the airport in Chesterfield. And then a couple of my officers are all trainers and they help the other county trainers train other departments. So we were able to, I think we sent Coroga to do EVOC and Bertram did defense tactics. And then it all circles back. We use their trainers for different things over the course of the year. So we're, we're knocking out our hourly training obligations as well. Brown's Pool called, asking for officers to come over for their orientation. Officer Bertram and Officer Edie went over and spoke with the employees of when and how and why to call the police during the summer months of when the pools open. We've already been there and kicked people out, all that good stuff already. So for the month, 1,203 dispatched calls, 25 crash investigations. This was interesting, 42 criminal arrests. So you've got 42 adult criminal arrests still going on while we're investigating a murder, dealing with rowdy people at the pool and outrunning traffic complaints and stuff like that. One thing I didn't put on my report and I made handwritten notes here. We received the issue of Broadway, that the people on Broadway, or at least one person made a complaint that they were speeding on Broadway. I went down in my unmarked vehicle and of the 50 plus cars that I observed myself, two were going 29 miles an hour in the 30 mile an hour zone and only one slow rolled the stop sign. And so while it's not Little Chicago by any means, we are keeping an eye on the area. Now, the other shifts, I've had my men detail to the area and they've made some other traffic stops. But we also, and I forgot about this until Mr. Reske had pointed out, we'd done a speed study on Broadway a year ago, two years ago. And it actually said that everything was as good as it can get and not to make any changes to that area. But just like any complaint in town, we do take notice, we go to that area and we check and we write citations as needed. And then I was seeing on the agenda tonight, there's two occasions where we're talking about speed. And I think that's an example of this town growing and our need to react to that growth. And one area I've seen and been contacted about, and I spoke to the administrative staff here at the town hall, old 132 coming into town. Now that we have the falls, you'd be amazed at the number of foot, bike and golf cart traffic in the curves on 132. And currently, when you come over the interstate into town, it's 55 miles an hour, it's 50. It's 50 when you get down to about 425 West. And so it's 50 miles an hour all the way in through the curves to Main Street. So I'm going to make a recommendation of some reduction of speed in that area and we're going to get together and brainstorm of how to post the signs and work on that. Somebody mad at somebody?
There's a parallel parking dispute happening, I believe.
Let's see, Broadway, speed issues, old 132. And I think a couple of the board members are aware. We're currently down a car because Officer Branson was involved in pursuits during the murder and totaled his vehicle. And just a little backstory to that. At the time Officer Branson was involved in the pursuit, he thought he had a drunk. Everybody thinks police know everything that's going on in the car that we're about to stop. It ends up through our investigation, we believe he was pursuing the murder suspect. The pursuit went into Anderson, murder suspect made the turn, Officer Branson didn't, tore up his front of the end and totaled his car. With that being said, we're down a car. So right now, we got the check, we're hoping to get the check back from that total. Use that money to purchase a used squad to Band-Aid us till our fleet arrives. Lepel has a car right now that's a possible purchase option for us at a reasonable price that wouldn't break the bank. We'd be able to use the Branson money for that. Or Shane's got a friend down in Indy that deals in used police cars. So we're going to reach out to him just to make sure we got the best deal possible. But this purchase of a car is literally to Band-Aid us till the time the fleet gets here. And then we'll use that car to then trade in or sell at a later date unless we're able to find one. So low miles, we'd want to keep it. The one Lepel has, has 103,000 on it. So it'd help us though. It's just something we're kicking around. I also made contact with perf today, spoke with Catherine. And we have a case number and she has to call me in the next two to three days to set up a face-to-face meet.
Great.
No more, no more Zoom or check out the website. I told her, I said, I want a human.
Yeah. Awesome.
That's it. I'm done.
Any questions for Mark?
And that's regarding possibly going to the 77 fund?
It's something interesting with my department is I have officers that come from departments that were on the 77, so they have froze that time. Me, for example, I'm civilian perf and have been my whole career. And then I have other guys that just started on my department that never had anything. So we have the whole gamut. And the sit-down talk with Catherine is going to be, can we all change? What's it cost to change? What does it behoove me to change? Should I stay civilian or should I go perf? And that's the talks.
Cool.
Yep.
Anything else for Mark?
Chief.
Yes, sir.
You have anyone on your department that might be an expert on counterfeit money? We've had issues at the pool. Last year, we got a $80 bill at time to time. Somebody could maybe touch base with them and we just hired like 37 kids.
Well, the simplest, easiest way
Yeah.
is to go buy one of those markers at one. Absolutely. Yeah, that's the easiest way and make sure they do it, even when the people go, oh, you can trust me. No. Yeah, but Stan Brown, my detective is, he's, he's taken in a lot of counterfeit's over the years.
Well, we're doing 20s. I'm hoping that'll do it.
Yep. Yeah, get those markers. They work.
Yep.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is Judge on Zoom? I don't think he is. Okay. And then Aaron is not here from the park. He submitted his report. It should be in your Google Drive. Sounds like things are going well at the park. Hannah is not here tonight, but Scott can present her planning status report.
Well, let's print it out.
Okay. Okay. All right, then Scott, do you want to do your town manager report?
Hello, very simple. So the major activities. So Indot had their US 36 public meeting last night where they're adding the travel lanes. The three major friction points, Indot's going to go, took, took one very serious. And I think it's a good chance we may get them to modify the raised median that's under their plans right now to be in front of East Central Way. The other friction point was the raised median stops under the current plan, stops before it hits Jimmy's Jerry Bar, but it's painted striped yellow, so that people aren't supposed to make a left turn in there. The owners of that property weren't exactly happy with it, but I think they're, they're going to accept that. And then there was some, some other minor cases, the Reidenhauer corner seems to be going well. The Indot right-of-way has purchased a lot of right-of-way that is going to be from the high school that is going to be useful for the high school, the Reidenhauer property. Couple of questions on the trail where the Hayden Way Trail will go. I think that's pretty much a lot of concern. The third friction point is a lot of concern. And finally, after two years of working with Indot, I finally got them to admit that the intersection at Water Street is going to be an issue. The project manager has not been the original project manager. She took over because basically of a major injury by the original project manager. But she admits that this is going to be a problem and that she's going to start looking into as quickly as she can. Signalization of that intersection or roundabout, roundabout being, she agrees, the most optimal situation, but that takes several years based on their funding. So that was the highlights of that. Summer paving is nearly complete. They had some streets that were pretty old. I think they've done a fairly good job. We haven't walked the project yet because they're not 100% 100% until Angle Road is complete. Angle Road turned out to be in better shape. Once we milled off the top, it's in better shape than we thought. There's more asphalt, existing asphalt underneath than we thought. And so they may be done with that today. And then what would be left is the cleanup. And then they, the State Street Flower Project, you notice the large flower pots. It's made the town look really, really nice. And so a lot of our guys did, did help the volunteer crew put that together. So the highlights. A lot of the employees were involved in the Osawarean project and Karen, if we could go to the photos. So you can see how nice that's looked, the barrier. They, the berm, they've decorated that with large rocks and planted some evergreens and also types of plant that will grow so that in a way that'll help keep from erosion kicking in and, but yet they don't have to mow it. I think the guys put the rocks there so they don't have to. There was a strategic move on their part. And yeah, if we go to the next photo, just another Aaron Goan, it was, I believe his idea to put the flower boxes out there. And the other Aaron. Poster with the street department. Between the two of them, they've done a really good job. And then Brett's been going out there, Bayberry's been going out every night and watering it. And then this is just a clip, a picture of how extensive the work is going to be on Angle Road. That's an important road for us because that's where the high school is. And so it'll be able to smooth that out. There's quite a bit of asphalt, even though they've milled off those, I think they went about four inches in that spot. And that they're going to build it back up to the current level. We're not going to, that's a patch rebuilding up to the current level and then we're going to add two inches on top of what we have. And then in the back near the entrance to the side parking lot, Ricky and the street department did a wonderful job of rebuilding a stormwater inflow. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Scott? Hey, great.
Thanks, Scott.
Moving on to old business, we have the second read of ordinance 2312, amending speed limits for the town of Pendleton. If you remember, this is kind of the temporary speed limit authority ordinance, correct Jeff Graham? Did that, I explained that somewhat correctly.
Police Department, Police Chief needs to quickly put speed limit
Right.
sees it as a safety hazard, as long as it's posted, their expression.
Cite that.
Cite that under this order.
Any questions regarding 2312, amending speed limits for town of Pendleton? If no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second for approval of 2312 amending speed limits for the town of Pendleton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, we have 2313 establishing hourly labor charges. We did first read on this last month and in shuffling the ordinance back and forth through revisions, the final version that was in your Google Drive omitted the overtime rate for the first page of folks there, those positions. And so that has been amended for this reading. Now, does this still count as second read? No, we have to start over. Okay, that's fine. Yeah. Yeah, and we talked about this and now I'm forgetting what we came to the conclusion on about this because we had this discussion.
We could do a pencil amendment, right?
Yeah.
Net Sergeant.
I think that's what we said we were going to do. Yeah, breaking that out. Okay, so do you know what those amounts would be? No. It's hard to do a pencil amendment. We don't have the amounts.
So. Do we know what they were?
I think that this is 3%. Yeah, that's fine. Yep. Yep, that's okay. All right, we will skip this for a minute and go on to new business. 2314 amending unified development ordinance. These are amendments that received a favorable recommendation last night from Planning Commission. There are four of them that you can see on the spreadsheet at the back of that ordinance. Again, as the UDO is a living document, it's constantly being revised. And every time we read it and realize something's missing, Hannah and the Planning Commission do a really good job of making sure that those amendments are noted and approved. So the first read counts as what was on a planning commission rap last night, correct? Okay. So we are the, technically the second read on ordinance 2314 amending the UDO. Is there any discussion or questions? They have not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving 2314 amending the UDO signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, 2315, another speed limit ordinance, amending the speed limit on East Street around Pendleton Fall Creek Park. So this is primarily the road adjacent to the soccer fields. I guess it is, it's not primarily, it is that stretch between Falls Park Drive and Water Street adjacent to the soccer fields that is currently 30. This would make it 20 miles per hour as the speed limit. Anything else we need to note regarding that?
Just generally, the town council is not permitted to reduce the speed limit to this level, absent a traffic study. However, if a park board requested adopt what their findings are, it's permissible if it's near a park like this. We did receive and made the park were recommended to us to reduce this. So generally, we can't reduce street, speed limits below 25. In this case, we can't because of the park location and the park.
And this would just be first read on this? Okay. Any questions or comments regarding lowering the speed limit on East Street between Falls Park Drive and Water Street to 20 miles per hour? There's no discussion or questions, I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second for 2315 amending the speed limit on East Street around Pendleton Fall Creek Park area. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And that is just first read, so that will come back next month for second read. 2316 rezoning from Planning Commission recommendation, last night's Planning Commission meeting. You should have this in your Google Drive. The petitioners here this evening. Scott, what, what notes do you have from Hannah on this? That's fine. This is the rezone for the parcel north of Tractor Supply. Yes. It's moving from industrial to institutional.
Yeah, that's basically all we have to say. There was no, nothing added that the Fighting Commission and it's
Institutional.
Yeah, no way.
Do you have anything you want to add as the petitioner? Again, the first read of this technically happened last night at Planning Commission, so this will be the second read tonight on 2316 rezoning from industrial to institutional. Is it, is it industrial or is it heavy business? It's heavy business to institutional. Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding that? Any comments from the public regarding? Okay. If no further questions, comments, or, oh, go ahead. That's okay. No big deal. We're pretty informal here. I mean, it's formal, but it's somewhat informal. Thank you for being here tonight. If no other further questions, comments, or concerns, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 2316 rezoned from Planning Commission. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, finally, in new business, we have resolution 2307, who's your start 457 deferred compensation for town employees? This information is in your Google document. I did not make copies of it. Karen, Willie, do you guys want to talk about this? It's the kind of originated out of your office?
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Right.
Yeah, it's, right now, it's not possible to count on.
Right.
This will be good for the employees and help us get good employees too, so.
Yeah, that was my question. The discussion regarding matching will be at a later time. Okay.
This is just kind of the preliminary step to
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for 20, resolution 2307? If not, I will entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of resolution 2307, who's your start 457 deferred compensation for town employees? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Okay, now are we ready to circle back and talk about?
Do we want to do two, a second vote on that?
It's resolution.
Resolution, it's already.
Correct. Yep. Correct. Yeah. No, no, it's fine. I always do a double take.
So how about this chief? So police captain stays at 99 and then this 1.5. Remember, this is, doesn't have to do with the office compensation. This is what the town charges for all our salaries that we have to pay.
Okay, so Scott, repeat those numbers again.
Yeah, so we keep Captain at 99.
Yep.
And Sergeant goes 95, which
Okay. With the pencils?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Any questions regarding this? If no questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval with the amendments that were stated in the meeting and documented on the paper copy.
Good chief.
Do we have a motion for approval?
Oh, sorry, I'll make a motion.
It's okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of 2313 establishing hourly labor charges pending, well, not pending, with the amendments as stated on the paper copy. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, I think that's everything. Any public comment? Yeah. About how many golf cart permits do we issue per year? Yeah, Connie, that's Connie's. 72 this year?
This year. 97.
Okay. It's a lot of golf carts. Okay, great. We will address that at our July meeting. Yeah, Jerry.
Quick question. Scott might be able to answer this. Stoplight by the post office. Planned there that wanted to do the crosswalk like we have here. With the increase of that free traffic. How do you own the business here for 23 years? I feel like we really need a crosswalk in there also.
It's a matter of practicality from what I understand and Scott can hop in if he wants to. But you know, we're built on limestone. And so to put the apparatus that's necessarily like the base for the traffic light on the southwest corner, there's no way to anchor it safely. Is that correct? So we're working through a series of possibilities. It's, it's not something that we, that hasn't been brought to our attention. It's just a matter of trying to figure out how to do it and make it safe and make it be able to be there in perpetuity without the risk of it falling, getting knocked over, or if it gets knocked over, where it's going to fall and that sort of thing. The limestone here is just, you know, it's, it's the gift that keeps on giving. We get beautiful falls. But you know, sometimes it makes any kind of excavation really, really challenging. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Is there a way to get creative with like the painting for now until we figure out like? Like? I agree. I never let my kids cross that way. I always make them go around. Yeah.
So
We're working on it though. It is, as, I mean, obviously we have a lot of emphasis on pedestrian safety and our thoroughfare plan and all those things. And so it is a little bit of a piece of the puzzle that we need to get done sooner than later. If we are going to continue, which we are, going to continue to encourage pedestrian traffic and non-traditional traffic.